Oh, very good.
We're good.
Good. Just in time.
Hello. Corey Kernan, representing the treasurer.
Our office wife.
All members of the compensation board had received the Iowa State Association of County Salary Survey. This report lists the salaries of the elected department heads for each county in Iowa. The board members representing their departments looked at the several counties that were comparable in size to Crawford County, either larger or smaller in population than our county. Now, some, some looked at the three smaller, some looked at the three, the two smaller, the larger. But it all came out to about the same average for the counties. As per my worksheet enclosed, which you should have in your work packet, the approximate average salaries for each department are as follows. The average for the county treasurer was seventy-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. The current salary for the county treasurer is sixty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. It was recommended that a seven thousand, an increase of seven thousand dollars, which would bring the new salary to seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars, which is more in line with the comparables. The average for the county auditor was seventy-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. The current salary for the county auditor is sixty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. It was recommended that an increase of seven thousand dollars, bringing the new salary to seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars, which again is more in line with the comparables. The average salary for the county recorder for the comparables was seventy-six thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. The current salary for the county recorder is sixty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. It was recommended an increase of seven thousand dollars, bringing the new salary to seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars, which again is more in line with the comparables. The average salary for comparables for the county supervisors is forty-one thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. The current salary in Crawford County is thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. It was recommended an increase of three thousand four hundred dollars, bringing the new county supervisor's salary to thirty-six thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars, with the seven hundred and fifty dollars stifling for the chairperson. The average salary for county attorneys in comparable was a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and seven, two dollars. The representative for the county attorney advised that even though the annual salary is above the average, he is the board, should discuss the additional workload that our county attorney has to perform. Also, the county attorney was in the private sector, he'd be making more money due to the high dollar per hour charge. It was recommended an eight thousand dollar increase, bringing the new salary to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Now, in your worksheet is the complete work, workup from Glenn Bargrover, who did represent the county attorney, and to his figures and reasoning behind that recommendation. The current salary for the county sheriff is ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Due to the requirements of the back blue law, there will be several different factors in the comparables that will make it somewhat difficult to come up with an exact average salary. The range seems to be between a hundred and ten thousand three hundred and a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. It was recommended a fifteen thousand dollar increase to bring the new salary to a hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Again, in, in the worksheet is, is the back blue law, and there were command officers of the state patrol, division of criminal investigation, different county sheriffs of comparable Crawford County size, and different cities with the populations comparable to Crawford County, that were, that were all figured into that, come up with an approximate average. A motion was made, seconded, and approved to advance the above recommendations to the county board of supervisors. In conclusion, the Crawford County Board, the Crawford County Compensation Board is made up of seven civic-minded individuals who have spent considerable amount of time studying all the information that was presented, that was presented to them to come up with what the majority feels was a fair recommendation. And I hope you will consider retaining the compensation board. Regards, Ted Leesman, Chairman, Crawford County Compensation Board. Any questions for any of the, anything for study the worksheets?
No, I'd like to commend you, Ted, I mean, you, you and your everyone that sat in. I guess I sat in that day for the first time ever, just to see how you came up with your reasoning. I thought it was legitimate for every one of them, but what I did thought about was that, do you ever take into consideration, I guess, the poverty rate of Crawford County versus the poverty rates of the counties that we're being compared to?
No, the only thing we can take consideration is
Just the size?
What you give us. We, we don't take into consideration the benefit package and everything that, that you have, because we don't, we don't have that and, and we can't dig it up. The back the blue law, to get that information, we have to go out and dig that up ourselves. Go to the state salary book, because that, that isn't given to us. The only thing that, you know, there, there's a lot of variables that.
In that back the blue, they do, that's so damn confusing, that's the most confusing bill ever.
That is, and they.
It, it, it is.
Well, they, because they just say command officer, they don't define what a command officer is. Well, what is a command officer in the Department of Corrections or the Iowa State Patrol or, you know, Department of Criminal Investigations? They never tell us, they just say command officer, they don't tell us what a command officer is. That would be nice to know.
Chuck Downey, who's retired, Highway Patrol. Now, I, I kind of went through all, the whole big picture, and then of all the departments and kind of did my figuring, and then the other representatives did their own. Now, Chuck comes up there, and I used, one of the, when I looked at the sheriff's thing, I used the state sergeants, lieutenants, and captains, and he said, well, sergeants aren't really command officers. But in that, on, on his average and my average, there wasn't much difference.
Difference, no.
Much difference on that, and.
Interesting, I mean, I'm glad that we kept the compensation board, I mean, I think we'd all been proud of what they did. Exactly, it kind of was.
Really, really, really thorough with the job.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, very, very.
First, you're afraid of cash offer across the mall too, because percentages seem to, you know, they just really can, makes it inequality amongst the departments spread like a wildfire, it's been dying. Cash would seem to keep it, I think, fair and equitable. Amongst the elected officials.
And I know you guys catch a lot of flack a lot of times, but I want to personally thank you for doing what you do. It's not everyone who, who wants to dedicate themselves to this position and make, make all these decisions. So, thanks for, for being county supervisor.
Thank you for what you do, happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I would love.
Thanks, Ted.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you next year.
All right, that was excellent, that was a great report, well-written, so, all right, you can now, I don't think we're ready to take action on that. So, wait till you haul.
Yeah, we can point at Danny Casper, I'll get Paul a call.
Yep, yep, let's go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion to point Danny Casper.
Thank you.
So, I'll second.
Very good, on favor, aye? Any pose, several aye, Danny Casper buyer, has a new job, all right, perfect.
Do you like work?
All right, good.
Yeah, if you're ready, we're ready.
Terry, were you able to get that, are you ready to open up now on calendar management something?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll sign down here, better get used to it.
You're the last one, ain't ya?
It is, you could trade drawers.
Talked to Chris, and they really don't, maybe you did too, or whatever, they really don't have a need for that sizes.
No worries.
Keeping things on track today.
Hurry up, get done here. It's New Year's Eve.
If they would have been asked at all, we could talk about it, but since.
To husbands.
He's about to be wanting to kill us. None of, none of us do.
What's that?
I'm, I'm always alone, everything that happens.
Alone wolf.
Used to be. The only one here with a husband.
We have a whole lot on here.
Terry's got, Terry's got.
Oh, sorry.
Eric counts.
I'm sorry, Eric.
Well, happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy, happy.
Don't have a whole lot on here, just the, the two contract projects are both in the lettings, moving forward. Bridge was probably shut down after the weather changes here, soon to be more like winter than what we've had.
By Monday.
Yeah, it's gonna get cold, so. We made, so, I don't know if you guys are ready for the dock or not, there.
Oh.
You know, we talked about, it gets really cold, I mean, we can always go out there and drill holes through the ice and work on that.
Yeah.
You know, on those twenty-five degree days when it's sunny out, it's ten below zero.
I think they would be ready for it.
It sounded like they got some more money, so, I want to talk to the guys Monday, kind of see what.
We're a good time to get that down on ice, but.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so.
Could get real thick next week.
It's gonna get thick, yeah.
It's only today.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at, and had a little, you know, snow and ice, just kind of more.
Deuce.
Deuce and anything else.
It still costs money.
It does, yeah, these things, you know, it's just, you just gotta go out and kind of take care of, especially for the holidays, you know, if you've got some icy roads and stuff, probably been out there more than we normally be out there, but you got a lot of people traveling and stuff, and so. But, little snow forecast for Thursday, Sunday, we'll see what happens, we're through the, we're, we're just about through the holidays, so. We get past that, so.
It's cold enough though, the snow usually.
Holiday month.
You don't always have as much.
It'll be wet.
Blows off, yeah, it just blows off, so. So, item four there is that Hungry Canyon's agreement for the Vale project, so, just need to approve that.
I'll make that motion. Phil second.
All right, any further discussion on that project?
So, is that the full amount, is Hungry Canyon's paying, is?
They're paying eighty percent.
Eighty percent of ninety-seven thousand?
No, that's the amount we're getting.
Is ninety-seven thousand.
Correct, okay, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That should easily cut off the project, I mean, that should.
I think so.
I mean, cost.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and we're gonna do the work, we're gonna do that, yeah.
So, it's kind of nice, because we get the money reimbursed us, just this top line, those sheets, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a good thing for us, the city of Vale.
Works for both communities, exactly.
It's, it's a nice project overall, but, so, so.
Jeff and Jackie will be very pleased when that gets done.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be nice.
When are, when are you open to it, next spring?
Sometime this summer, in the summer of twenty twenty-five, yeah, yeah, this could be summer, so. We also have the, the annual bill from Hungry Canyon's for five thousand dollars for the annual dues, but.
Well worth it.
It's well worth it, because we're putting.
Trying to get our.
I don't, we just.
You got our dues back in twenty years.
Still, have been awarded three point three seven seven million.
Hope every investment returns as well. That would be nice.
Then no more discussion, I'll call a vote, on favor, aye? Any pose, same sign, show votes aye, motion has been approved.
I, I don't know if you heard that number though, but, but has been, you know, structures, awards and payments totaling three million three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So, it's been pretty good, yeah, that's to Crawford County, over the life of the program. And then we've got another one that's at five for gamble, everybody, you know, on the road,
My last month.
Where we've always had trouble with stability, the downstream channels are always failing, that's closed.
Farmer must be sitting over there.
Putting one of those together for that, that might be partially funded too, so.
You know, I went to a funeral one time, the guys, flyers fell off.
Not on a bus.
No, not on the. It's a hole bear.
Yeah.
Hole bear?
Yeah. You never know when you do flyers. You know, when you're a little kid, and that was, that was kind of a rite of, you know, adulthood, when you got your first flyers and flyers older, you know?
When you were up town.
That's right, so.
Girls do the same thing for a purse.
I mean, my purse, my purse, I remember that day.
So.
Sam Rodakis called me, and he just wanted to say, tell Paul, thank you for meeting with us down in Raleigh, just really appreciative.
Yeah, yeah.
Guys, come to any consensus, or?
Gave him some avenues of things to look into.
Yeah. You know, and one thing, I don't know if you guys have talked about that project at all, is, you know, are they considering their property to the north at all, or, you know, that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Right by the highway?
Yeah. Might be an option, I don't know, that would save everybody a little money on, I don't know.
They didn't, they didn't mention that one.
Yeah, it's got really good highway access. Could have anyhow, you know, if that, that area was just developed, or that street was developed in there, so. Something to kind of think about is you discuss that with them, you know, as a possible option, might be a lot less road, roadway improvements, so. You know, on that note, I don't know if you want me to share what I think, my morning epiphany?
No, I mean, that's fine, we're just.
You know, I was driving around that Charter Oak site with Tim this morning, kind of looking at, you know, where we'd put the new building, and it's like, you know, this is really not a good site to build a new shop. I don't know if you're familiar with our yard, Charter Oaks is long, narrow, the riprap and everything, it rocks, it's right along the road there. And, so I, I go out east of town, found what I thought was like the, you know, perfect spot. I did talk to the landowner, and he.
Didn't say no, huh?
He'd said he'd think about it and get back to us.
East of town on the highway?
Yeah, yeah.
At the intersection of.
That one.
No, no, one thing, you, I guess.
Yeah, just going straight east, so, my point is, is that, you know, we're looking at taking and utilizing what we have. And you drive around, and it's like, I mean, it's not a bad site, don't get me wrong, it's worked for however long that shop's been there. But, you know, if we do this, we go somewhere else, we gain a little more ground, we have, you know, much more room to stockpile and utilize the site maybe a little bit better, and then we don't have to tear the old building down.
It's marketable.
We could probably sell it, and somebody else might take it, because the building isn't, I mean, it's not in great shape, don't get me wrong, that's why we're looking at replacing it. You know, we need wider, taller doors, you know, just, just a lot of things, but it still has some utility, and may have some value, so I'm kind of looking at that.
Sure has value if the Charter Oak could put it back on the tax roll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if somebody purchases, so I guess, you know, I, I bounced it off of these two this morning, just to kind of get a pulse before I started running out and looking behind something, you know, what the hell is up?
Would think the trucking company interested?
I got a lot of problems.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have any problems.
You take a, it took a leap of faith.
Yeah.
Took a leap of faith years ago for Slester, and it turned out to be.
Well, Slester is ideal, I think. Yes, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, is let's move it out, get five, six acres.
I was thinking about. Where was the shop at Slester before that?
It was right along E sixteen, kind of, and you went east out of town, south side.
Your store, okay.
And we sold that, yeah, sold that pretty easily, so. So anyhow, just, it's just kind of weird how things just, you're driving through, it's like, this. Sense.
Water, everything's there.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So.
All right.
And I also inquired about a price of their property for the new shop down here, but I know, we don't have the money to do that, that's a long distance thing, I really think that's gotta happen someday.
Nope.
So.
Don't say we don't have, we don't have liquid.
Yeah, we'd have a plan for that, it's probably the better way to put it, you know, over a period of time, the first thing though, is get a piece of property bought, and that one was also not in.
It's gonna be most of ours.
Yeah, it was a good day.
This is current.
Wait the end of the year. Let's quit talking.
Next year, next week, I got to come and go over a bunch of stuff, so, I don't know, we'll do that, but anyhow, good year, it's been a very good year. Hope you all have a good, happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, thank you, Paul.
No, you can get out of here, I couldn't. Thank you.
Anytime.
I just picked my readers away.
We don't have any cash in the office. That money, I guess, is money that they bought coffee with back in the day, and it's been back there, I didn't even realize it was under there, so. We don't have any cash in the office.
I should go in and.
That's your slush fund?
Where'd the money come from?
It's been under there, I've never.
How much is it?
Not much, a five dollar bill, four dollars in dime.
They bought coffee, like, that was employee money that they used for coffee or something?
Not actually counting transact.
No, I just.
How'd you find that, Ty? Very good.
Okay, so, we'll have to fix that, I'll probably have to bring down the paper to put a zero on it, actually, you want to do that always zeros?
Do it.
I'll be right back.
So, Terry, what are you showing here?
So, the, the colorful one, the striped one, the top line is our current fiscal year. The employer, the, the gray column headers, I guess. That is what the county is contributing currently to the insurance plan. The actual employer portion is levied out of supplemental. The additional county portion is, comes out of our self-funding fund. Okay, the blue, the blue row is a four percent increase to well-marked. We're gonna find out what that is pretty soon from Holmes and Murphy and EBS, but, so, everything was calculated at a four percent increase, the employee portion, employer portion, that additional county portion, which we can't continue to do, not at the rate we're doing it, because it's coming right out of our self-funding fund, we are not funding that anymore because of the nature of Holmes Murphy, the premium we pay Holmes Murphy, they get, they now hold the funds, well, EBS actually holds the funds, and that's the other report, but don't go to the other report yet. So, the pink line adds employer and additional portion together, and that's what we would levy from supplemental, whether it be rule supplemental.
We're really not gonna be paying.
Right, and that's if there's a four percent increase, and there's a chance that there might not be, we don't know that yet. I mean, Holmes Murphy and EBS had some, kind of some good news when we talked to them, so, we're hopeful. Because of the whole, that whole trust thing that we're in, the IGHCP's thing, so, yeah, that's gonna benefit us hugely.
Ultimately, we'll, we'll spend down our self-funded fund to zero.
Eventually, I don't know that you want to do it right now, I mean, I, we're getting, I think we're at like a seven hundred thousand, and I meant to bring that in this whole pile of papers, and maybe it, nobody.
Because us keeping it a million and a half really isn't the same.
It's not beneficial to us.
Right, what we're doing.
Yes, if we switch back to a more fully self-funded plan, I just don't see it happening, not with the way insurance is currently, and the costs and stuff.
In a way, if you're gonna spend it down, and then it's just basically prolonging us levying it up.
Right, right. I mean, eventually, we could spend it down more, but it scares me to do it completely all in one year. And we could get really close to doing that if we continue to do what we're doing again.
Look how the adjustment came back and bit us in the butt.
Right.
Or it would give us a little bit of cushion that way.
Cushion, but we had.
Does Holmes Murphy give you any direction of what, how to best handle that self-funding?
No, I think our auditors would be the best information we could get on, on spending that down, I mean, it was, it was levied for insurance. You know, for this, so that's what it has to be spent on, of course, so, yeah.
Is what, that one legislator actually gets rid of the supplemental levy?
Because of that, that's two thousand a year per.
It'd be really bad, it'd be really bad.
Yeah, that's.
So, I just wanted you to see what that, what that is gonna look like.
We need to call Steve, stop on his foot.
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to share that with you, that's the info we're gonna get out to the departments, so they budget for that number in their budgets.
Do you know how much the supplemental, how much the levy would go up by just making that change, and it being a four percent increase?
I don't. Because that, who's winner, I mean, you know, a little bit, so it all, it, yes, no, I don't know that yet.
Holmes and Murphy said they'd get back to you on.
Um, I think in January or February, I can't remember, it should be really soon, because they like to do this early, because they know we budget, you know, we have.
They told us last year, because it will be already here, it'll be sooner.
Yep, exactly, and then you can see what the cover calculation is also, so, any of our retired employees that continue insurance with the county, that's what they contribute to. To our insurance plan.
If at all possible, and it does come in very favorable, I'd like, myself, try to keep the employees' contribution as close to what we can.
Yes, yep, 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 I agree.
So, we'll change this over, so each department will have an increase in their department.
Yes.
Tax.
Under their supplemental.
Under supplemental.
Rule in general.
So, I mean, just as us five will have to keep note of that, to say, jeez, our budget is increased, but it's not necessarily, just have to
Right.
Be aware that their budget is gonna increase.
Right. And we should be able to identify the difference between the base. We should be able to identify the difference between the basic, like general basic and real basic portions of those budgets. Now, so, yeah, I wanted to share that with you.
That's good information.
Yeah.
I can't wait for the good news.
Or it might not have a four percent increase.
I can't. I, I want to make sure that, well, that's good.
You know, this is not bad.
No, this is not bad, this is not.
Some of it's the cost of doing business.
Absolutely, um.
I mean, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the way it is.
We're in a better spot than we were a year ago.
Right.
I made some.
Right. So, the other, the EBS form, it shows you, um.
Okay.
Where we're at. So. The top portion is receipts, that's the money we paid the EBS. Um, and then out to the right is our grand total so far, this is through the end of November. Um, almost a million dollars.
And the money.
The money that's gone to, um, all the fees, the, the same, most of them are the same costs, it's the claims process.
So Carrie, just so I understand this, right, when we, when they say total receipts, like for the month of July, that would be the amount that we paid EBS?
Yes.
The disbursements would be the amount that EBS paid out.
Yes.
And so then that balance is like our balance, our money.
Yeah.
That's in there.
Yeah, and you see that seventeen thousand in the July column under the receipts? That was startup money, we had to fund the fund.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, early, and we've had to fund the fund one other time.
Really?
Yeah, one other time. Well, I think it was in October, that's when they actually started paying claims, it was October.
Because remember there was that.
They ran it down, and so we haven't had to, currently, there's thirty thousand dollars, over thirty thousand in that, in that account balance.
So. When that, when we did that seventeen thousand, remind me, where did we take that money from?
Self-fund. Self-fund. The million dollar self-funding, eighty-five hundred fund, yes.
And we're all, we're all over the hump, when we were transitioning, and then they weren't, we were laid off some of those.
Yeah.
Doctor bills and things.
I think they're getting all the little glitches worked out.
That's the July, August, and September, where then bottom three lines are showing zeros.
Yeah, you see where, yeah, where we, where they dispersed zero dollars.
Claims process.
They were transitioning, they were trying to capture.
You can see that's probably.
Yeah.
Was EBS getting for being that?
There's admin fees and all that kind of stuff.
Fees.
That's what's in there.
It was a small percentage.
It wasn't, it's not terrible, I don't think.
Broker's fees thirteen thousand five fifty, right?
Yeah, that's probably Holmes Murphy, they're our broker.
Yep, you know. Fee fees, fourteen hundred dollars.
So we'll have week commissioner on Tuesday's agenda.
Yeah.
So you can make some decisions on the two applications we can have, the deadline's four o'clock today, so it's almost over, but.
There's two.
Two, yep.
And on this sheet, what's the Crawford County at the very bottom, PSF?
I think that's partially self-funded, yeah. Yeah.
See, so we got to keep something in that. What's the number of that account?
Eighty-five hundred, a self-fund.
Yeah, and we're never going to go and run that.
Not entirely.
I mean, there's, you know, you're.
But we might have room to move it down a little bit more.
Yeah.
So how, but would you take it out of supplemental to refill it?
If it needs to, right?
Yeah, you'd end up filling it the same way it got filled initially.
And we still can spend some now.
Hoping that claims don't outweigh the cost of doing business.
Okay.
Yep.
And hopefully, if we kind of, we don't get too crazy with it, let it see out over about two or three years, how much it gets used of each year.
Yeah.
And then give us an idea of what we kind of need to have in that fund.
Yeah.
I do think it was a good move to change to Holmes and Murphy, I mean, once we got those little glitches kind of settled out.
I'll pay in three years, four years. But so far, so good.
Yeah.
I think there were a few glitches, but they were just things that, you know, they just had to know about, and they were so, I think they seemed easy to work with about getting things.
Yeah, they've been very accommodating as far as some of the uniqueness of our plan that we left. Allowing that to stay, like with the local chiropractors and things like that.
Little things.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that sticks in my brain the most, is that one, but.
I remember Todd Stater's deal.
Yeah, I think, I think he still had some issues.
No.
I don't know how recently, but right around election time, there were still some things that they were working through, and I think Amy was, um, being a big. Asset to help him communicate with, um, the people at EBS and, and get that fixed, so, yeah.
So now it's tired, right? Bears.
Yes. Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Now, some more good information, lots of numbers to, uh, kind of look at.
Yeah.
So it's kind of the. Feeling, kind of, that our insurance isn't going to really hit us hard, that that was, and it's going to. Okay.
So Amy and I had a little thing with them, I can't remember when, it was, I mean, it was, sounded really good.
Seems like if one year it doesn't hit you, the next year.
I know, I know. I mean, it's the claims, so it's.
Right, can't get a consistent.
And you can't predict that.
No, you can't, not at all, Dave, not at all, it's just, it's unfortunate from a budgeting standpoint and from a, you know, levy standpoint, that you wish it was consistent, but. It's that way forever, business, they don't know what's going to happen.
We make our best educated guess and.
And move forward.
Yeah.
All right, good information to, uh.
Yeah.
Look over, good information from Ted, lots of. Yeah.
Ty, are you doing the board's budget?
I did that.
Did anybody get it, or did you get it emailed to you?
No, I just kind of did it to let the chair know.
Okay, I don't know if anybody, I didn't know if, I have to ask her, ask Michelle if she emailed it out to someone.
Can you email it?
You can do it.
Yep.
I mean, it wasn't hard to do.
It's due Friday.
The only big.
Ty did it last year.
You did it, you did the poll. Everybody kind of put theirs in and did it together, you know, because that was your first year and that.
No, I didn't get anything.
We'll figure it out and get it emailed out. We'll email it to all of you. But whoever wants to work on it and needs to start working on it.
Tuesday will sit down, really, we'll sit down, me is.
So who's sitting here this year?
Wherever we end up.
I can do it, I can do it, it's not very hard.
No, I know.
We really don't have much.
We don't have much.
Carrie, we don't know with insurance.
I just called, I don't understand.
Yeah, he needed it.
That's what we just talked about.
Four, I mean, it was four.
Yeah.
So probably write in four.
Right.
I guess we could always, if it's less than that, we can always take that back.
Right, I mean, we could do the current rate and whatever little bit, if it does go up to four percent, which it's not much. But.
Tuesday, email to us and we'll talk about it Tuesday.
Yeah. So it's all on the agenda for Tuesday then, with.
All the whole thing.
Oh, no, we got to.
The thing, the whole thing. The laundry list of.
Then just one more.
Budget hearings that day.
Hey, that's how good it means.
The budget hearings that day. That amendment.
We do that at three o'clock on Tuesday then?
No. I didn't mind this, but.
Whatever time you want.
Yeah, my grandpa always said you can't drink today if you don't start in the morning, you can't do that if you got four o'clock.
Right, thank you, Craig, for that.
Yeah.
It was dumb.
For your listeners.
Great, I just, Wayne Jean wants IT next year.
Amazing.
That's awesome, yeah, you guys got that email with all your list of.
Well, if the reason that.
Wayne, was he, was he the city house member?
Property owner.
Property owner in the city, okay, that's what I thought.
I haven't heard about it.
Mental health is not.
You talked to.
I mean, that on Tuesday, before Tuesday, if you can.
Who'd you talk to on that? What are you, Phil Strachey?
Oh.
I haven't heard back from him.
What do you know about?
For a farmer.
Yeah. And then Dwayne. City property owner.
Yep.
Henry, I.
Okay, yeah. Oh, your job to film.
So Dave, are you and I then going to flip to see who goes off?
Phil might. Phil.
I just feel like I hate it being a seniority issue.
I can be cared for that.
Right.
I just think it's fair that I.
June's so good, she could take both of our spots.
I do not doubt you, Dave, we've not doubted.
You guys' compliments are good, yeah, I'll do it all by myself, no worries.
She's here.
How come we do have two on?
These aren't really.
No, they did two on all these.
We have two on early childhood and.
Seventy-five percent.
Two on that, is that just because maybe the city appointed two people in school?
They're not necessarily.
Well, we decided that a core is just to have two and three bodies there, one person.
Right.
Yeah.
That's just based on current percentages.
Yeah. Yeah, but then you get down.
Which tells me they're fast.
I don't know what he's doing.
I'm cheering, today we're twelve oh three, we're actually just. Twelve o'clock, we're starting twelve oh three.
We used to miss it because we would.
So basically, long enough to say, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Was that authentic? Just playing.
It would take us longer than cranks to eat than it would do me.
That's, that's based on currently what they make, the percentage of his, of the salary currently.
Yep.
Yep.
But like, what's.
Same up here. These are based on what they've got.
Directions one person.
Yeah, this year.
But it's just odd.
And I've sent that, and he's gotten that, and I, and I explained that.
Alternate either.
It's different than that, you need to let us know, because the board is wanting to know.
That's the reason that we alternate.
I always said I would get that back.
Like that.
And then you all need to let me know when that needs to be on the agenda. To adopt the compensation of elected officials.
You guys be thinking about.
Okay, we'll be thinking about it.
Because I have.
I really liked the Western ward.
I got something to talk about, because otherwise I won't have anything to say.
I'm fine unless somebody really thinks they need more drum in their life, they can take central.
I'm pretty happy with it.
With all that developments that's there, I mean. I'm not trying to poke a bear or nothing, but do we even want to really be a part of it?
Other than for what Nate would say, I mean, because he, he only uses it for the long-termers.
As much, as many years as we've been on there and as much as we've used it, is it.
Worth it?
Worth while being at risk of being a part of something that we don't use.